It fights against massive injustices. But not in a naive or destructive way, but with real scout intelligence and imagination. And fight for real social justice and fairness and for the future of our city and region. And particularly, including people across the city, that includes people in our communities who are the worst hit, and includes the businesses who are really under pressure at the moment. And many of them are trying to pay living wage, and some of them are still managing to do that, some people actually holding their wages at the top of the organisations, so that others can actually pay a living wage. So the addendum is really to help keep hope alive and to keep fairness at the centre of our thinking. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Speaking in support of the motion, I'm actually seconding the motion, and in support of the addendum that the council court put in. Simply to say that our support for a way forward, this council's support for a way forward on social value, on further employment, on the living wage, is a win-win situation. And I'm glad Jane mentioned the business community, because although these changes would certainly be to the advantage of the workforce, it's also proven in study after study that this would also be a benefit to business. If these changes could be implemented, it will take time, but there will be less turnover of staff, reduced absence levels, more commitment to the business aims of the organisation, and perhaps most, most importantly, a more contented and productive workforce that would help everyone in the city to drive the things forward that the mayors referred to in the devolution debate. This is a positive way forward for the city. It's positive for business, it's positive for our citizens, and I urge support for the motion and for the addendum.
My Lord Mayor, I imagine, when I first read the motion 12, I held it back in not what it said, but what it didn't say. And why do I mean by that? It talks about solutions for low pay, and it talks about the public sector, Raymond Bowman Hospital Trust, Health Services, Housing Associations, and those that please. And it just struck me, it gave the impression by default, and I'm sure it wasn't designed to do that, that we actually don't recognise one of the main drivers away of getting rid of low pay and low earnings. And when I say earnings, that's because earnings can fluctuate over time, shift people in life. We are talking about the big private sector, because big private sector investment, the Vauxhalls, the Fords, the universities, are mentioned, and we don't also talk about both the small business sector. Because if you look at the strength in some of the American cities, it's obviously the small business sector growing, it's driven up earnings, and earnings have driven up employment opportunities. So I did have a reservation, it was looking at just the public sector, and therefore, I'm not opposed to the motion, and I agree with its contents, I think there's also, we need to have a broader debate, and how do we restructure the benefits and tax system in this country to get greater incentive for people on low pay and give employment better. And I think there is a valid debate. However, I am pleased with the amendment, the attitude of the amendment, because it does actually talk about a broader economy and the private sector, and I think that does allay some of the reservations, the impression by default the motion put, and I will be supporting it, and particularly the amendment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We would also like to give support to this motion, and also to the addendum from the council court. And particularly, we're really pleased to see the focus on the living wage, it's something we've called for before, and it's been quite a big, very strong campaign of ours over the years, so we're pleased to see that, and we welcome the movements that's happening with the scrutiny panel, etc., so we support the motion.
Yeah, thanks, Lord Mayor, just very briefly, I feel very glad the Greens are willing to join us on our campaign for living wage, and I think what's important to say, councillor Radford, is that we can't, it's very difficult to go into private businesses, and far be over me to name who I'm talking about, but to insist that they start doing the same zero hours wage, I'm not going to mention that again, but what we can do is try and influence the thing that we can control, and show leadership in terms of creating the city's living wage, and that's why you can do that with public sector agencies, because of the strength in the numbers of people that are involved, as is any kind of driver, and that's what the intention was behind the motion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's a privilege to have the opportunity to make my maiden speech for this esteemed chamber, on a mission that is so important to an entire group of people in our city, that politics so often forget young people. Let me be clear, colleagues from the start, I totally support the inclusion of relative of sixteen and seventeen year olds to vote, and believe the EU referendum would be the ideal opportunity to introduce such a fundamental change. Lord Mayor, I believe that if young people aged sixteen and seventeen years old aren't allowed to have a vote in the EU referendum, then they are being denied the basic right to have a say in their future. It will be the young in society that will live longest with the outcome of the referendum, so they should be engaged in the decision on the future direction of our nation, and the consequential impact on the rest of the EU. Firstly, let me indulge colleagues with a few facts. It is undeniable that in modern society, young people today are always treated as adults, whether that be on the bus or train, whether they have to pay an adult fare at age sixteen, or when they're flying, and have to pay an adult fare when they're just twelve years old. At sixteen, young people can obtain a passport and travel by themselves on planes, trains, and all forms of public transport, and they have to pay an adult fare in most cases, fact. At sixteen, all those making play that is legal with another person of the same age to start a family, fact. At sixteen, a young person can leave school and take up full-time employment and do the same work as another employee who is over twenty-one, despite the minimum wage being less than half of that of the twenty-one-year-old, also pay tax and national insurance, and contribution to the income of that country, fact. At sixteen, a young person can join the armed forces and defend the country, fact. During the Scottish referendum, young people had the chance to vote on whether they wanted to remain part of the United Kingdom for a suitable future. They were only sixteen and seventeen years old, fact, and yet, at sixteen, you're not allowed to vote. The arguments for not treating young people as adults in the political system are fragile and obsolete. So why is it that this Tory government, who in the past destroyed the future aspirations of so many young people, are trying to deny the sixteen, seventeen-year-olds today the chance to have a say in their future? I can tell you why. As this austerity-feasted and conservative government only think about the rich, with the big tax breaks and offshore bank accounts, and reward their own for failure, leading to the harsh reality of the austerity measures we currently face in the city. Why don't the Tories want lots of nothing old youngsters having a say on whether we stay in Europe or not? Why? Because they're scared, and they all know the outcome of the young people that will vote. Young people aren't stupid, and they will decide to stay in Europe, as most, but not all, have benefited from being in Europe, and especially in this city, where we have received transformational benefits from European membership. Politics was taken out of the curriculum a number of years ago. Why? So that the few, not the men, would have the knowledge about its importance and be able to argue what is right and wrong. Instead of watching ostracising our young people, we should be engaging with them, engaging with our young people, and giving them the confidence and courage in them to have a say on what they want for their future. Politics affects us all throughout our lives, but we're not that we are conceived until we die. We know what an important and valued role that young people play in this city. We all should know about the importance of politics, and there should be a place for advocacy, and there shouldn't be a place for advocacy or exclusion. Everyone has a right to say about their own future, so why is this Tory government denying young people the right to have their say on their future, as the young people of today are our leaders of tomorrow? Lord Mayor, I stood for the motion because I am grateful to believe that politics is a vehicle for good and can positively transform lives. Whether young or old, rich or poor, whatever their nationality, culture, or creed, a person should have the chance to engage in our political and democratic processes. A vote is the most basic expression of participation, and should be open to all. I urge you to vote and support this motion for all our futures.
Now, just before I bring in the next speaker, there's been a moment of amendments, and I want to bring the chief executive, it's for the compromise amendment, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I understand that the amendment has been agreed between the small and councillor Francis, which would, well, he got on the conversation there, it goes as well as duly. Paragraph three, and insert, this council believes that sixteen, seventeen-year-olds UK subjects from Commonwealth and EU citizens, who are permanent residents of the UK, should have the right to vote at all elections in the referendum, including the EU referendum.
Councillor Radford?
Can I speak super nicely and make it clear that the conversation was also with the Liberal Party Group, who did table an amendment on EU citizens in Commonwealth. I really have to correct one thing on councillor Francis. Ian, I respect all the arguments for voting for sixteen, but it's not a party political argument, the last Labour government didn't give votes to sixteen and seventeen, and it doesn't help to win a consensus of changing the voting system by making it partisan. There are Labour enthusiasts who oppose gay rights, and Tory enthusiasts who support them. It's not a party political issue, I think it's actually about changing people's views. My parties have consistently supported votes at sixteen, there's some Labour members who want to agree with it, and I'm sure that's true across all the political parties. I really don't think it helps to make it partisan. What we should do is talk to the merits of the issue. And I think the amendment is very helpful, and I thank councillor Small for bringing it, because we try and work on consensus as a constructive opposition. One worry I had about the original motion is the idea that we should have votes for sixteen and seventeen where we think, we think young people are going to vote, and therefore, we think that's advantageous to the outcome of the vote, so we change the rules for that election. And actually, that was part of your argument, which I find quite frightening. You were arguing we should have votes for sixteen in this referendum, because you think young people will vote to stay in Europe. Actually, I think that's really, really dangerous. We should either say, young people should vote at sixteen because they have all the obligations adult, adult, right to marriage, right to go to war, duty to go to war in some cases, and pay taxes, therefore, they should vote in all elections. And I think as soon as we start playing ballgame, we'll decide the infranchisement, because we think that would suit the upcoming vote. I think we're actually on dangerous ground. And I think that's also why the amendment that we've compensated is really useful. I think, and I know with a community that has an increasing number of Commonwealth citizens and EU citizens in their ward, the number of EU citizens who don't realise which elections they can vote in the United Kingdom or not, or believe they should or shouldn't vote, and some believe they know and recognise they won't write to vote and believe they should. But also Commonwealth citizens, who historically, and I include the Republic of Ireland, as a very unusual analogy, have the right to vote in UK elections, and not all of them do, and not all of them aware of. So I would say we can debate, whether it's about the contribution of the Chinese community to the war effort, and one of the reasons why we historically in the United Kingdom had Commonwealth citizens voting, it was because many people have a joy of loyalty, they are loyal to their country of origin, or part of their family network, but they have a loyalty to the United Kingdom. And I never forget that only recently, I was travelling back on Virgin Train, chatting to one of the attendants there, and he was sick, and he didn't know, I'll finish on that, the fantastic effort and contribution his community made to the war effort for the United Kingdom. So I think the amendment is useful, because it says consistency in all elections, all elections eligible, and we shouldn't do it for one election and not another, we should do it across the board, and the compromise, I think, is very constructive and sets that principle clear.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I congratulate councillor Francis, I love that, that's a fantastic statement. I'd also like to congratulate Kieran Brody from the Liverpool Schools Parliament. I've been spending a bit more time with the Schools Parliament with my new role as looking after education, and I think the work that they do in this city really is a credit to all young people. And it's great that councillor Radford and I could come together on this amendment. I would respectfully say, though, to councillor Radford, the last Labour government may not have brought in votes at sixteen, but I don't recall David Lloyd George bringing in votes at sixteen either. He may have given votes to women over the age of thirty, but he certainly didn't give votes to sixteen-year-olds. I think we need to go further than just the EU referendum on this, we need to bring in votes for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds at all elections, and that will change the nature of politics. I will end on a party political point, and I'll say this, that if sixteen and seventeen-year-olds could vote, I don't believe that you would have had government treble intuition fees, strapping air raid, and George Russell stepping in. Sixteen and seventeen-year-olds need to vote, because these are crucial issues, and they need to have their say, and they need to be able to impact on politics.
Councillor Francis, would you like to rise and add to the commentary?
Just to say that it's a start at the EU referendum, and it's only the first, it'll be the first time, you know, in the British politics, anyway, that for the vote for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, and then to take it further on.
Right, I'd like to boost the vote. All those in favour? Three, is that enough? Motion for singing. If I invite councillor Edward Francis to do the voting in the mayday, I can also advise the council that councillor Edward Francis should be in the seat.
Great start, thought the night. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Mayor Anderson, council. We hear very often about the tenure difference in our expectancy between the poorest and the wealthiest in our city, and between the difference between Kensington London and Kensington Liverpool. What is not so well known is that the average man in our city will live for just fifty-six years before developing a major life-limiting condition, fifty-six. He will spend one quarter of his life living in poor health. Long call to council, one quarter. In 2013, the responsibility for public health moved from the NHS to local authorities. This has been welcomed in Liverpool, we do after all have a strong history and track record for public health. Public health has come home. However, it's come home at a time of great challenge. I would like in public health to return to local authorities to an episode of Come Dine With Me. The hosts are ready, the table is laid, the guests are greeted and made welcome, but there's no food. On 31st of May, I tuned in eagerly to the Andrew Marsh Show. I don't often watch his show eagerly, council, I found it very bad for my blood pressure, but that day I had high hopes. Simon Stephens, chief executive of the NHS, was on, and was talking about his five years' forward plan. He emphasised how crucial public health and prevention are, both in terms of improving people's health and wellbeing, but also reducing the amount of money that's spent on healthcare for preventable diseases. Indeed, this is at the heart of the Mayor's Health in Liverpool programme, and our bold initiative with our local health partners. Stephens told us that public health bodies and educators need to tackle overeating with the same ferocity as teen pregnancy and drink driving, labelling obesity the new smoking. He said, we've got to change the way care is provided and get serious about prevention. Great, I thought, knowing how our hard work in Liverpool has paid off, with our smoking prevalence reduced significantly, and our teenage pregnancy rates reducing steadily. Finally, some recognition, silly me, just four days later, on the 4th of June, the Chancellor of the Exchequer announced an in-year cut of £200 million to the Department of Health, I quote, non-n-HHS spending. In other words, the public health grant for local authorities in England. In-year, I can hear you thinking, well, that can't be very significant. After all, these are programmes that have already been commissioned, work already carrying on, contracts issued, residents benefit, bluntly, life saved. Council, this £200 million cut is 7.4% of the total public health budget. It's the equivalent of the public health grants for Liverpool, Manchester, Leeds, and Birmingham combined. It's huge. Most of these contracts are with third sector organisations or NHS providers, NHS providers who have already had to cut budgets to achieve so-called cost savings of 20%. This government promised no cuts to the NHS, yet within a month of their election are making cuts to the NHS by the back door. Not only that, but it's highly likely that these cuts will actually place an additional burden on the NHS. Coincidence evident last week from the advisory group on contraception suggests that the effects of this cut to public health budgets of local authorities will result in a £250 million increase in costs to the NHS from unplanned pregnancies, and that's just one area. We don't yet know how the cut will be calculated for each authority, the promised consultation has still not begun, it's the end of July. We estimate that the cut to our budget will be between £2.95 million, that's this year, council. Many of you might not know what the public health budget pays for, as it is a new responsibility. In no particular order, and apologies if I forget anything, we pay for school nursing, sexual health services, NHS health checks, drug and alcohol services, smoking cessation, falls prevention, waste management, weight management, as in all life, waste management. Thank you. Improving mental health, reducing suicide, dental health promotion, getting people more active, plus local targeted initiatives such as our groundbreaking Sunboat campaign, our award-winning Healthy Homes programme, the 20 mile an hour scheme, oh, and I forgot, from October we get Health Visiting too. Briefly, council, some examples of what we achieved. We all know the saying, prevention is better than a cure. For half a million pounds, GPs provide disease prevention advice to more than 21,000 residents. If this advice is delivered by practice nurses, then for half a million pounds, more than 43,000 residents benefit. Sometimes, though, public health actually pays for treatment. I brought with me our Terry, he's a fictional resident that we allow quite often in public health. Terry has recently undergone treatment, his alcohol misuse, helped by the community alcohol team. Terry's no longer drinking, his likelihood of hospital admission is reduced, and he and his family's quality of life is much improved. For half a million pounds, council, 800 Teries are helped, half of them successfully complete their treatments, and either stop drinking or have their drinking under control. Like Terry, our services have helped Jono and his family to have a better quality of life. Jono is one of almost 300 addicts, drug addicts, who have successfully completed our drug treatment programme to become drug-free. For half a million pounds, almost 600 drug addicts are helped. Sue is about to become a grandma, she wants to see her granddaughter grow up, so she accesses our stop smoking service for help to quit. For half a million pounds, 5,000 residents are helped to quit, not just improving their health, but also the health of those who live with them. The cost of all five of these examples, council, is less than the £2.9 million that we are expecting as the minimum cut this year. We're not alone in condemning this short-sighted false economy, a number of our neighbouring authorities have condemned it too, as have the British Medical Association, the Faculty of Public Health, the Royal College of Midwives, Macmillan Cancer Support, Diabetes UK, the British Heart Foundation, and other leading health charities. With a third of the population predicted as being obese by 2030, 70 children a day still starting to smoke, and the total cost of alcohol-related harm estimated at £20 billion, now is the time to invest in prevention, not reduce it. Council, I call upon you to join me in asking the government to reconsider its short-sighted and contradictory approach to public health funding and honour its previous commitments. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Are there any that speak?
Well, I'd first of all like to congratulate the councillor on her maiden speech, because to my mind, we should be using that speech as the start of a conversation that is desperately needed not only in this city, but in this country. I've been thinking about this, because as some of you may know, from the 1st of August, I become the deputy chair of the Community Wellbeing Board for Local Government Association, which looks after health and social care activity. And my view is that I've always been a member of the National Health Service, because I've been councillor. And perhaps one of the parts of that conversation that we ought to have is whether what we call the National Health Service now is really the National Illness Service, because, put it simply, they do a lot of curing and patching up and making it better, and thankfully they do that, and I'm not knocking that in any way. But the fact is, that given the pressures on the health service, particularly of the increasing numbers of us who are going to get old, there will never be a position in which we can find enough money to keep the health service as currently constituted in business. And that's why the conversation which has been initiated today on public health is so vitally important, because it's this council that educates people, that can play a major role in public health. It's this council through its environmental health activities that can play a vital role in people's health. It's this council, a strategic healthful, a strategic housing authority, who can make sure that people live in decent homes, in decent neighbourhoods, that can stop people becoming physically and mentally ill. It's the way we create neighbourhoods, it's the way we provide transport so that people aren't lonely, but they can afford to move around. Almost every single service that we provide is actually a major determinant of the health of this city. And that's why I was delighted that one of the reforms that I welcomed in the Health Act that went through in 2011 was the return of public health to this council, where it was till 1978 but got taken away from us. So yes, we do all those things, and we all know those problems, but on the cap of that was the public health function specifically returned to us, which I think will be seriously disadvantaged. The fact is that we know now that the generations below us will die sooner than we are because of teenage obesity, which will cause a whole series of problems with diabetes and osteoarthritis problems. We know that, and the only way we can tackle that is to put the money into public health through this council to make sure that these problems do not occur.
Thank you, Sheila. Pleasure in a second in this motion, first of all, I'd like to congratulate my colleague Helen for both the powerful persuasive speech, and continue to the room in that second eight minutes.
And contrary to the ruling that's circulating around the chamber at the moment, this is not my maiden speech, as I'm almost colleagues remember the one I made in 1982.
Yeah, I know. You were there. Members, Liverpool has a longer and illustrious history around public health, dating back to the days when Dr Duncan was the first chief medical officer for health sitting in this local authority. And while we see a contradiction in terms of a poll named after the most famous medical officer, I am sure that the policies of this pleasant government are probably needed for a dividend to drink. And since that time, when it comes to public health, Liverpool has never shied away from difficult or challenging issues. It was this very council chamber on October 20th, 2004, that this council voted to support a private members' bill, for Liverpool to lobby government for local legislation to introduce small free workplaces in Liverpool to protect our population from the secondhand smoke. This action led to the national smoke-free legislation that we all enjoy today, and which has resulted in saving many lives from heart attacks and common heart disease. This was the real public health in action, and we will continue to reap the benefits of our combined actions to prevent ill health and extend the lives of all our people. More recently, we have used a similar process to lobby the government around cancers. At the council meeting for Liverpool, I was alerted to the fact that we have high levels of sunbed use in our younger population compared to national figures, and that we also have an increase in skin cancers which are linked to the use of sunbeds. This led us to develop the London Diophore campaign, again calling for government to allow Liverpool to have its own legislation around licensing of tanning salons, again a position supported by this council in 2013. Our campaign has led to numerous actions at a national level. I gave evidence to the old Labour Party on skin, and now they've brought the Health to consider a national approach to this money issue. Without taking public health seriously, we would not have either of these lifesaving accomplishments. There is nothing more important than preventing ill health in our communities, with issues such as alcohol, drugs, and obesity, just to name a few, are leading to long-term ill health and many early deaths. And Liverpool, and in this chamber, we do take this seriously, and it's because of this that we condemn the cut of the £200 million to the public health budget now sitting on local authorities. And finishing, if you remember nothing else from today's discussion, just remember that at the inception of our National Health Service, one of its main planks and ideals was 'Prevention is better than cure.' Thank you.
The Green Party also strongly support this motion, and also thanks to the councillor passing the persuasive speech. It's well known that if we do spend, any money that we spend on public health is reaped many times over in money saved on healthcare later on, so again, this really is a short-sighted policy by the government. And I think also, many of the other things mentioned in the five-year forward plan are extremely worrying, does seem to be the government's programme to introduce more privatisation and take about the two things that have been done in recent years in the NHS, so strongly support this motion, and we'll be back here in front.
Councillor Castle. Do you guys like the title?
Please.
All of you, please. Please. Is that us? Thank you. Motion, fifteen. And I invite councillor Hans Thomas to move the vote.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The links between not being in work, being in low-paid work, and claiming both their benefits were unknown. The Department for Work and Pensions' pre-limbed estimates of 2010 to 2011 was that only 0.3% of incapacity benefits spending was overpaid because of fraud. Yet the government is pressing ahead with more cuts across a range of benefits and services which reduce disabled people's life chances and quality of life. A concept of claims being fraught and scroungers is willingly common. Government statistics show that 10,600 people in the UK died between January and November 2011 after having their benefits stopped. An article in today's independent newspaper says the government is refusing to publish up-to-date figures about people who have died after being refused benefits. There are second disabled people who cannot work due to the medical conditions they have, be that physical, sensory, mental or all the conditions. The specifics may differ according to the condition someone has, but the themes and disabling barriers are shared. There is also popular view that to be disabled always means being unable to work, have a career, unable to have a more green, independent life, and unable to be someone who supports others. But in order to do these things, disabled people may need specific adjustments or support. Government statistics show that the proportion of disabled people who are not in work but want to work is much higher than for non-disabled people. Even those disabled people with degrees who want paid work are out of work at almost the same rate as non-disabled people with no qualifications. Disabled people cite employers' discrimination, negative assumptions and inflexibility in work arrangements. Disabled people also cite systems that are supposed to support them as being problematic. There can be resentment in the workplace when adjustments are made for disabled people to enable them to do the job. Accusations that they are putting this on are sometimes made. Resentment can be shown through forms of bullying, which is fairly easily ignored and left out. Social networks are important to everyone in or out of work. It's far too often disabled people are inadvertently left out of genuine ignorance or thoughtlessness such as events and activities being held in inaccessible venues. There are still many non-disabled people who do not know what it means to have a disabled carie. It can be a steep learning curve when a disabled person goes for tea. Resentment and hostility is not confined to those on the job market. Catherine Corby in today's Guardian writes about the motivations behind disabled state crime. She found that motivation included those where attackers mentioned benefits or scroungers. One disabled person told her, 'I was asked why I use a wheelchair sometimes, but sticks on the dais. I tried to explain my condition of illness from day to day. I was then told I was just fat and lazy and was doing it to get benefits.' Transport is bikely holding down a job, but disabled people can find resentment and hostility there too. A disabled person told Corby, 'The bus was quite full, but a guy who had a cramp wanted to sit with his partner and demanded I move. I said no and tried to explain my disability. He called me a spaz and a morn.' Corby found that over half of all attacks were group-based, and that women were involved in most of those, whilst men were more likely to act alone. And the Crime Prosecution Service hate crime report of 2013-14 showed that women were perpetrators in 25% of discovered hate crimes, with only between 13 and 15 other forms of hate crime. In 2013, the Equality and Human Rights Commission produced a progress report following a formal inquiry which revealed that harassment is a commonplace experience for disabled people, but a culture of disbelief and systemic institutional failures was preventing it from being tackled effectively. The report noted that the majority of authorities did not express any mention of human rights in their responses, despite an obligation to uphold the Human Rights Act of 1998 in their work with the public. For example, the right to be viewed and treated. Lord Mayor, disability is all too often pushed to the sidelines and dismissed as a matter only for health and social care. That is wrong. Disability is a mainstream issue. Disabling barriers are created across every issue from employment, to community safety, transport, housing, education and more. We have a duty under the Equality Act to show due regard to avoid discrimination and promote equal relations. There are things we can do, and we need to ensure that we are not allowing discrimination, resentment and hostility to occur. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thanks, my lord mayor and colleagues. And, you know, it makes my blood boil really to listen to what councillor Thomas has just described in reading these reports and hearing the statistics. Twenty years on from the DDA Act, and here we are, and we're still having the same discussions and the same experiences. And then about a month ago, a friend of mine who's in a wheelchair phoned me up, very anxious. Claire, can you give me a lift to the Atos Medical Centre? Now, for those of you who don't know, I didn't, it's moved from that island. It's up near a supermarket, I won't name where it is, because I'm gonna shame it publicly today. That place has been DWP certified as wheelchair accessible, and I stand in here today and telling you, it is not! And as, so, we go, and I'm there actually, to calm her down and reduce her anxiety, you know, by the time we get in, I'm fuming, and so she, and there we are again, two weeks later, and here I am shaking with anger still, as you can see. So I took my friend in the wheelchair, couldn't get in the car park of this business centre that the Atos Medical Centre is located within, and so we had to park in the supermarket car park, couldn't park in the blue badge space, because you don't have a blue badge, you should have a driver car. And then push her over three curbs of road rock, sorry, bump, 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 up a steep hill to the door of the business centre, knock, push the button to get in the door, oh, woman at reception's waiting to me, push the door! Sorry, I can't, because I'm pushing a lady in a wheelchair, and another person helps me open the door, getting, same situation as going to the Atos waiting room, push the door open again, as you can see, fuming. Fill in a complaint form, and the staff were brilliant, they were fine, the interview went okay, but my friend, despite having a prognosis of that she will never, ever walk again, may well have to go back for another assessment in a year or possibly three years' time, who knows? She doesn't yet. And so then, fill in a complaint, the complaint comes back from Atos, back to my friend, saying, 'You've complained about your interview.' No, 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 you haven't, she hasn't. 'I've complained about the inaccessibility of the building. They've not got in touch with me, they've got in touch with her, twice.' And I've still gotta resolve that. Cabinet member is on the case with me, because this is unacceptable, these are easy fixes, we shouldn't be having these arguments and these discussions. When I raised it with the business centre, they were disinterested, they said, 'Oh, you're walking backwards with a wheelchair, don't you?' I was, like, yeah, no, I was thinking so of the one time, but, you know, it's just, you know, and without my help, my friend would not have made it to that appointment, she would have been sanctioned, and her benefit would have been stopped, and, you know, it's common sense, we all need to support this, and we just need to keep our eyes open, and you keep on the equality agenda here. Thanks.
Councillor Thomas, rising up.
It's iniquitous, isn't it, that due to the Tory pest, the right wing pest, because they call it well beyond the Atos, back to the disabled, is it iniquitous that they've managed, right wing, as the likes of David Mayer, when they do public surveys, they're starting virtually to make the word disabled synonymous with society. That's what this government is all about. For me, their attitude towards disabled encapsulates everything that's wrong about these people. And we all have stories, don't we, about facts, about, and in terms of the way how poorly they treat people, and what I was sharing was what I found about yesterday.